Call the council meeting to order tonight. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Primoroso.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablin.
Here.
Councilmember Russo.
Here.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Levy.
Here.
I see no additions, deletions, and modifications. We'll move on to announcements and presentations. First up, Florida First Responder Appreciation Week. Tonight, we're here to take time to recognize our first responders. The men and women who selfishly serve in this capacity, firefighters, paramedics, police, deserve our utmost respect. Our first responders, our neighbors, are willing to do what they can to protect and save others, including risking their own lives. As national trends impact our country and community, first responders are charged with the task of consistently adjusting to the needs of those of who they serve. They are often the first people there in your time of need. They never hesitate to perform their duties while facing danger, even when it makes them vulnerable. And so, I asked you to join me tonight in recognizing the brave people who stand ready, not for just this week, but for every week of the year. Governor Rick Scott has proclaimed January 5th through 9th to be the Florida First Responder Appreciation Week in the state of Florida, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Tarpon Springs Police Officer Charles Condit and Leon County Sheriff's Deputy Christopher Smith were recently killed in the line of duty, and whereas each loss of a law enforcement officer is heartbreaking, and losing two heroes in less than a month is a cry for peace and a signal to all Floridians to pray for our men and women in uniform who protect our communities each day. And whereas Florida's first responders include law enforcement officers, firefighters, EMTs who bravely and selfishly risk their lives every day to protect Florida families, visitors, and businesses. And whereas Florida's first responders do not hesitate to risk their own lives in order to save the lives of others, and their commitment to continued training, skill enhancement, and inter-agency coordination make them vital members of every Florida community. And whereas acts of kindness and appreciation from citizens for our first responders provide them needed encouragement and support to confront the dangerous and uncertain situations that they face every day. Now therefore, Rick Scott, Governor of what I call the great state of Florida, do hereby proclaim January 5th through 9th, 2015, as Florida First Responder Appreciation Week, and encourage all Floridians to take time out of their day to show first responders and their families how much we value their service to our cities, counties, and state. Florida First Responder Appreciation Week will be an opportunity for Florida leaders at every level to demonstrate appreciation for all the men and women who serve and protect our state as first responders, and an opportunity Floridians to say thank you to the first responders who keep us and all of them safe. Governor Rick Scott has herein to set his hand and cause the great seal of the state of Florida to be affixed at Tallahassee, the capital, this 29th day of December in 2014. Governor Rick Scott, thank you very much. You make our city proud, and things like this are very special to us, and we appreciate, obviously, the job that you do every day. So God bless you, be safe, and thank you again. So let's move on to the Honda Classic Economic Impact Presentation, please.
Then I'm not going to follow it. I'm going to bring up Mr. Ed McElroy with the Honda Classic. As you know, the Honda tournament is close upon us, and we have a great partnership with the Honda Classic, and as he walks up, we're going to roll a little video for you.
That's a beautiful shot. Oh, magnificent! Johnny Miller, the second time he has won an indoor error. Look at this shot by Halo, and it's going to be within three feet of the hole. Excuse me. Come on, Ed! You're kidding me! Holy, McElroy! Is he going to do it again? Mark Wilson with a clutch putt! There it is. That is a beautiful way to end a great week for Camilo Vajagis. It is right at it. I would say so, just on the right side of the green, that far for Eagle to post 10 Tiger Woods with a final round, 62, the lowest final round of his PGA Tour career. And McElroy has finally realized his dream. He has ascended to the top of the world. It's looking good. It is makeable, makeable, yes! Right. Oh, and McElroy has set up for an eagle. Best shot of the day, right there. And it is Russell Henley who survives the Honda Classic. Russell Henley emerges with a win at the Honda.
When Honda came to this area, some of the Honda executives from Fort Lauderdale came to us and said, "We're bringing our tournament to your community. We want to be part of your community." So because of Honda, we've really been able to do some special things in our area.
The Honda Classic has allowed us to be able to be the focus of the community from a child's standpoint.
Pretty neat.
Thanks, Charlotte, and good evening, City Council. I guess I still get goosebumps watching that. My apologies. We're about 46 days out from the 2015 edition of the Honda Classic, and coming here for me for the last eight years has been great because it really signifies the start of some very incredible things to come. So I'm excited to be here. Thanks for having me. What I want to do is just take a few minutes to share some of our plans for what we hope is going to be the most successful event in the 13 years that the event's been hosted here, certainly for our residents, hopefully just an incredibly fun time, and ultimately an incredibly impactful event. You know, one of the things that I want to stress is that our full-time team of six, not to take anything away from what we do, but if you look at the top events on the PGA Tour, it's not about what the individual team does, it's what the entire community does. And I've never been a part of an organization in my 20 years in this business that has such an incredible leadership and group of partners behind them, and it starts with the city of Palm Beach Gardens with Jack Downey, Charlotte, Chief Dorita, Commander Shnerd, the entire Palm Beach Gardens team does as an extension of our team, is nothing short of spectacular, and I rival any PGA Tour market that has a better partnership. Certainly, things start with our host organization, Councilmember Russo, Children's Healthcare Charity, our Board of Directors led by Jack, and Gary and Barbara Nicholas has been just absolutely spectacular. We'll talk a little bit more in detail about some things, but having donated over 10.6 million in the last eight years is something that we're very proud of, and certainly when we're accomplishing that while at the same time making very, very strategic investments back into the property, which we'll share as well, is something that we're extremely pleased with, and certainly the leadership of our board is the ones that really leads the way there. Of course, it all starts with an incredible ballpark. PGA National is an incredible host for the tournament, and the champion course itself is wonderful, but it's not just that, it's the leadership, it's their ability to get behind some of the ideas and really make the strategic adjustments to continue the growth. One key thing that I think is going to be worth its weight in gold is the regrassing project at PGA National this year, the transition to Champion or Celebration Bermuda. The players are already raving about it, those that live in town and have played the golf course. So I think those continued improvements of an already successful program is going to really truly show some incredible improvements across the board for us. In terms of some notables, the attendance last year, we ended at about 193,000. It was a 14% increase. Of course, the city of Palm Beach Gardens has been hosting this event for 13 years. We've been fortunate enough to work on it for nine years, going into our ninth year at PGA National, and with that, our increase has been about 120%. In 2014, our television ratings were the highest for any non-major on the PGA Tour, which we're real pleased with. Can be viewed in 600 million homes worldwide in 271 countries and territories, and along with that, there's over 30 minutes' worth of focus and attention on our global broadcast for our city and tourism properties in Palm Beach County. Economic impact, it's doubled over the last eight years to 40 million. Some data reveals that we've got over 30,000 visitors from outside of Florida coming to the tournament. We've got 5,000 international. Still, we have over 100,000 spectators from right here in our backyard, and it's getting to be more and more of a challenge, given the digital assets that are out there, the television capabilities is making it certainly something that makes us fight harder and harder every day to bring incredible product to our community. We've been fortunate enough to win a couple of awards in the offseason here. Certainly, the one that we're most proud of is the fact that we were just voted the most fan-friendly event on the PGA Tour. While we're making these improvements in the property and trying to continue to create long-term opportunities for charitable giving, we're going to continue to make that investment in the value of the patronship at the tournament, and we've got some great new initiatives starting this year. We, the Honda Classic, just moved from North Palm Beach to Palm Beach Gardens. We're in the new 3,300 building, so we're ecstatic to be the newest resident here. In fact, as a business now, and you know, working out of Palm Beach Gardens, I think of the 6,300 or so businesses here, we've gone from, you know, probably mid-level to as a $13 million property now, the top 15 companies here in Palm Beach Gardens. So we're excited to be in that element. Charitable giving, which is what we're most proud of, certainly is the fact that we went from 2.13 million last year to 2.55, which is a 20% increase. Our eight-year increase is 400%, and our eight-year total is 10.6 million. We've been able to make donations to 245 charities, the majority of those are children's charities. But it's not just about the money that we're donating, it's about the programs that we're developing. The simple donation of a Honda car has developed a program that we call Birdies for Children, where we've got over 100 charities that participate. They can go out and solicit pledges. The pledgees gets the number of birdies at the upcoming tournament for a chance to win that new car. That program alone started in 2010, and we've raised almost $3 million just from that project. Birdies for the Brave program, we have a best-in-class military appreciation program at the tournament. Last year, we fed over 10,500 veterans at the tournament, and again, it doesn't stop there. This year, we're going to be providing a service puppy through an Adopt a Service Puppy program to a wounded warrior. We're going to be making a donation of about $35,000 to benefit the VA Hospital's visually impaired unit and disabled veterans so that they can learn the game of golf and hopefully elevate some of the challenges that they've been dealing with since coming back from war. The keys to growth, certainly, you know, it starts with, you know, our community equity. You know, we know we're going to have a fabulous one-week golf tournament. We knew that with PGA National, the home that we've got, the incredible golf course, that the world's best were going to play. We're happy to say that we've got one of the top five playing fields on the PGA Tour, so our focus since day one has been to create interests or create experiences for people of all ages and interests, you know, whether it be, you know, our involvement with the Miami Dolphins and the military programs, the Birdies for Children's program. We've created a 5K that'll be coming up here relatively soon, a high school invitational that's one of the top high school events across the state. Of course, our involvement here in the city of Palm Beach Gardens with the green market. So for us, it's not the traveling road show where the players will go off to the next market, it's making sure that we're a major part of the community on a year-round basis, which certainly helped us create a significant amount of equity here. But again, what it all boils down to is the charitable giving programs. You know, interestingly, in this offseason, our Grants Committee, led by Michelle Jacobs, led a needs assessment, and there's some pretty concerning statistics out there. We live, work, and play in one of the best communities, incredible counties in the world, yet still, one in five children are below the poverty line. One in five children in Palm Beach County don't graduate. So there's a lot of very concerning statistics out there. So as we continue to grow this incredible PGA Tour property, a great professional sporting event, we take our responsibility seriously to take the needs assessment that we're creating and make some changes in our community. So I think what we're going to be seeing over some time is some really good success stories about, not just about the dollars that we're donating to charity and the number of charities that we're able to connect with, but also certainly making a direct impact and improving some of those problem areas that we're finding in our communities. I want to show a couple of PSAs. Certainly, one of our, you know, our primary beneficiary is the Nicholas Children's Healthcare Foundation with the Nicholas Outpatient Center right here at Legacy Place. There's a couple of very great stories that have come out of the support of the Honda Classic that I wanted to share with you. The first is Kiara, who's been receiving some treatment here at the outpatient center for some time, and the next will be Mason, who's doing the same.
Kiara was born with a hemangioma. When she had her third birthday, it had quadrupled in size. It's not a bad memory for her. She knows the care that she was given, and she actually likes to tell people about it because she was a brave girl who has no limitations, and I can't even begin to explain how grateful I am. The care that they've given has just been unparalleled. I thank my stars every day. The Honda Classic definitely did right by us.
Mason had a large tumor on his brain stem. It is a miracle, and we're really excited about the progress Mason's made. Being home, I think, helped Mason more than anything. He's a miracle, and, you know, every day, we're just so thankful for everything. The Nicholas Outpatient Center has been just fantastic. We're so thankful for the Honda Classic, and we got our Mason back.
So again, I can't thank, you know, City Council, Palm Beach Gardens staff, residents enough for believing in what we've been trying to accomplish, and certainly helping pave the way for just an incredible, an incredible event, but even more so, a great business that's making a large impact in the community on a year-round basis. So we hope we see everybody out in 46 days for sure, and we're looking forward to our best event ever. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Let's move on to items of resident interest in Board Committee reports, and we'll start with David.
You know, before we start with that, it's always good to see Ed because he always brings us good news. So as a matter of fact, I came up to him before the meeting and said, "Ed, I'm glad to see you here because everything you've got to say is so wonderful." I mean, how blessed are we to have the Honda Classic here in our city? And, you know, I remember back, I guess, what is it, eight years ago that they started over in Mirasol, and now they've moved over to PGA? Longer than that? I know it's been a while, and I tell you what, it's incredible. I remember where the tournament was and what it was doing, and it was a good tournament then, but now it's orders of magnitude better than what it was, and it's just amazing the work that your group and the city has put in to make this just really probably the most successful non-major tournament that there is in the country. So, you know, I'm happy it's here.
Mirasol's first year, I think, was 13 years ago. Am I right, Ed? 13 years ago.
It does, it does.
I know, I was younger then, too.
So, you know, in the vein of good news, too, I don't think it's come through yet, but Marcy and I attended the police accreditation hearing, and we got to hear from business owners and citizens of this city, their thoughts on our police department. And I will tell you, if we can get that tape, you know, of what our citizens and business owners said about our police department, you guys will be absolutely amazed. It's amazing how good a thought that our people in this city have towards our police department, and I've got, I saw Chief Step here earlier. He's still here, Chief? Okay, he had to go. Well, I'll tell you, my hat's off to you because we have, I think, without a doubt, not that I'm biased, I did say this at the accreditation hearing, I think that we have without a doubt the best police department probably in this country, so. When Rick Scott wrote his proclamation, he made one little mistake. He should have said the Palm Beach Gardens Police Department and first responders, because I tell you what, I'm not going to discount our fire department because they also do an awesome job and are also accredited. On a little bit more, the only way I can say a boring note, is I attended the C-51 Governance and Finance Board meeting, which occurred recently. I just want to tell you what I made, the action that I took on behalf of our council, which I have actually gotten guidance from the council in previous meetings before. The C-51 Governance and Finance Board staff has brought forth a resolution supporting the development of the C-51 basin as a water resource. I told the governance board that, you know, although I believe that the C-51 basin is a good project, it's a great project for the southern portion of our county and for Broward County, and also has some great environmental benefits by cutting the amount of water that goes to tide down the C-51. The city of Palm Beach Gardens does not get a benefit from the development of this basin. Therefore, we would not be willing to sign a resolution supporting it, and we will not be willing to put a financial contribution towards this because it would be like us paying for a water project in Sacramento, California. There's just no sense to that. So I just wanted to let them know, the council, that I went ahead and told the Governance and Finance Board, the only reason why I'm here is because I have a certain expertise in water, hydrogeology and everything, and although that wasn't received well by the people in Broward County, it was received well by the people in Palm Beach County. The five of us all attended the Hank Fishkin Economic Update Report, which is hosted by our own PGA Corridor Association. And Mr. Fishkin gave a glowing report for the United States, for the state of Florida, a little less for Palm Beach County, but a very glowing report for the city of Palm Beach Gardens. We're doing the right things, we are meeting the challenges that we need to ensure a good economic growth into the future of our city. The one thing I always like to point this out, every year Hank Fishkin says that interest rates are going up, and he did point out that every year he is wrong. So he is predicting, though, that interest rates are going up yet again. One day, though, he's going to be right, so we've got to be careful about that. But, yeah, you think that is? I've asked him, I don't know if you guys saw about this, I also asked him about oil prices. And I think that the OPEC nations right now, they're increasing supply so that they can knock the price of oil down and knock out some of their competitors, including alternative energy sources, oil shales, frac formations, and things like that, which are more expensive to bring into production. So I have a feeling, once they've cut their competition out, that they're going to end up cutting their production, and oil prices will start creeping back up. Hank Fishkin actually disagrees with that and said that he suspects that we're looking at low oil prices for maybe the next year or two years, but we're probably about at the floor right now. So with that, I'll pass it on. You'll agree? That's fine.
Now, real quick on the oil thing, let me just say this to you. The problem, it's not OPEC, it's Saudi Arabia. The other countries in OPEC can't afford the oil to the production, you know, what they're selling it for. The good news for us is Hank Fishkin is right, and I think it is going to be low, and the good news is it's not going to go back over $100. So the good news, at least, is when interest rates are going to go up, and they are going to go up to short-term rates, the oil will help mitigate that. And in the meantime, the economy is going to grow like he says substantially because you have all this additional income that people are having between the lower oil, lower interest rates, and so forth. That's why it's going to continue to grow. The good news for us, okay, is in the short term, we're going to grow significantly also, and there's going to be a lot happening, but we also got to be prepared for at the end of the next two or three years, when those interest rates, as you saw, by 2017, he's saying the Fed funds rate's going to be at 5%. Now, that's unbelievable, but that's really a significant, and that is going to have some impact. But anyway.
So that year of economics I took in college, yeah. But what we should do is, I think that we should all put our predictions in a hat and open them up a year from now.
Okay, you got it. We'll do that next meeting.
Marcy?
First, I'm going to apologize because I have a cold, so if I start coughing, I apologize in advance. I want to start by, I know, that's why these guys have been moving away from me for the last half hour, and I don't blame them. I want to first start off by thanking the Honda for being such a wonderful partner to our city, and thank you for your continued support of our community. $10.6 million is nothing to, it's amazing, and I just want to thank you. That's wonderful, and thank you so much for your support. I attended the League of Cities Tri-County BBQ in Belle Glade this past month. David and I attended the Palm Beach Gardens Senior Luncheon, which, once again, staff did a phenomenal job. I met Bert's 11th grade English teacher, and boy, did we share some stories.
We'll be noticed on the web later.
Exactly. All of us attended the Carol Singh put-on-by-Betty Seither. It was very nicely done outside the community center, and again, staff did a great job putting that together, and they did it outside this year, which was very, very nice. I know it was a lot of hard work, but they did a great job. We also celebrated the second day of Hanukkah by lighting the new menorah donated by our very own Eric Jablin, which was also outside the community center, and I appreciate all of you guys that participated in surprising Eric for that. That was a nice event. Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you guys for coming. All of us attended, as you mentioned, the Hank Fishkind Economic Forecast, which, 4% increase. That was a positive note for the next couple of years. And like Joe is saying, he wasn't as positive about 2017, so we gotta keep that in mind. So, we'll do the hat thing and see what happens. And last, because I'm gonna keep it short this time, as our calendar turns to a new year, I wanna wish for goodwill and peace to mark all of our lives and that the best blessings bring joy and prosperity to each home. I wish that our nation, state, county and city, as well as our military and first responders, experience a year of safety and growth and that walls that separate and divide us become steps to unity and common purpose. And finally, I promise to serve our citizens with a servant's heart and a Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you, Marcy. Very nice.
I'm not gonna be as, but I am gonna say a happy and healthy New Year to everyone and everybody's family and it's good to see everyone back. You know, David, I didn't attend that. Unfortunately, that was my sick week and right now you see Marcy out there, but I spent the week, whatever, she says I gave it to her, but I'm not so sure. But anyway, there's so many people that had it. And I will tell you that I did call in on that, to the police accreditation, I had an interesting conversation. I must've been on the phone 15 to 20 minutes with the gentleman on the other side of the phone and talking about the police department. It's just, it's great that he was telling me some of the things that he was hearing and it's really great to know that all the hard work that the department puts in and it's just amazing how, how great it all is, so. I just wanted to, you know, we mentioned Honda and, you know, there's a, you know, we mentioned the $2.5 million that we give the charity, we mentioned everything that goes on and I have to tell you that this, this tournament has grown significantly and part of the reason is we have a great staff and a great organization there. But the other, the other reason is the Nicholas family and I don't know if anybody saw this, but I just wanna read something that somebody's gonna be getting a well-deserved award. The United States Golf Association yesterday announced that Barbara Nicholas will be the recipient of the 2015 Bob Jones Award, presented annually since '55. The Bob Jones Award is the USGA's highest honor, recognizes an individual who demonstrates spirit, personal character and respect for the game exhibited by Jones, winner of nine USGA championships. Nicholas, the wife of 18-time major champion Jack Nicholas, has generated attention for her youth-related charitable causes and volunteerism for more than 55 years. Barbara's getting this award and, you know, I have the greatest amount of respect for Barbara and Jack, what they've done. In fact, when, when they dedicated the, you know, the street over there in North Palm Beach for Jack Nicholas Boulevard, and we were all there and everybody was talking, you know, I, it, they are just such great people. You know, God gives certain people talent and certain people do a lot more with it than others. And the Nicholas's have just done a significant amount for children. We wouldn't have the tournament, we wouldn't have the children's hospital if it wasn't for them. And Barbara, I've had the, just the great experience to know her and to work with her and she truly cares more than anyone I've ever met in my life about making the world a better place for children. She says, like she says, she says, "You know, when we leave this earth, they're gonna be here long after us and the difference you can make is a bigger difference when you're making it with a child." And I just wanna thank her on behalf of all the residents of the city and all, unfortunately, the children that have to use that hospital, but thankfully, because of her, it is, they have a better alternative. And sometime in the future, I'd like to see us honor Barbara because, in the city here, because of all that she's done for us here. We don't see much of her, but I will tell you, she's there doing all the time and caring and so forth and she's been really great for our city, so.
Nicely said. I agree too on that as well. Eric?
Thank you. Very nicely said, Joe. Kudos to that family there, wonderful family, great asset to this whole region, they really are. And Ed, thank you so much for all you've done for the Honda Classic over all these years. It's a great tournament, we're all so happy to support it and we're looking forward to this year's playing on the, on, on the ball field, as you said, yeah. It's, it's gonna be another great year for, for the Honda. I haven't got much to say, all I wanna do is say Happy New Year and hope you all had a wonderful holiday season. Thanks for the mention of the Hanukkah. Menorah, next year, hopefully, we'll expand it. This is the first year that we've had a permanent menorah and I thank you for that. And I wish you all a wonderful Happy New Year and as the economist Hank Fishkind said this morning, 2015 should be a banner year, so let's all participate in that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Happy New Year, everybody. Interest rates are going up September 1st. There's my, there you go. There you go. There's my, throw it in the hat, you know, when I said September 1st. They'll go up a half a point the first time and then, and then small after that. That's my guess. Let's see here, Ed, we've got enough praise for you already, but thanks again. We certainly, you know, we appreciate everything the Honda does for our city, for our northern county, really for our whole county, I guess you could say. And the Nicholas's, just special people who have really made a big commitment to our area here. They've lived here so long that it's special that they got involved in the beginning and have stayed involved and have gotten probably even more involved and more active in the things that they do for children and charity. So, we're, we're thankful they're, they're a part of it and we're thankful our name is attached to it, so thank you. Eric and I went to the Discovery Village groundbreaking of the new ALF facility off a jog road by the Turnpike entrance and the guy was funny. He said it's only the second time they've had an elected official show up for one of their groundbreakings and they have probably 30 facilities, I guess. So, we got a chance to see their plans and what's going on out there and it's gonna be a beautiful, beautiful facility, so we're looking forward to that being hopefully done in the next year and up and running. Another interesting thing that I went to this week and I happened to see it in the Palm Beach Post, I didn't know about it, was the Alamanda Elementary School did the ribbon cutting for their new running track. And what they did, they fundraised about $18,000 through a public-private partnership with schools and companies and Office Depot and Whole Foods were their two big sponsors. But it's part of a whole health and wellness program that the school started in 2013, so kind of a magnet, if you will, for wellness and, and health at the elementary school level. And it's a pretty awesome program. I think it's the only one in the country at the elementary school level that does health and wellness for their K through 5 kids. So, we were out there for the ribbon cutting and Mike Murgio was there and got to see a couple of the kids who graduated from that school years ago, who are now in high school, actually did a mile, which I think was eight, eight times around the track. And they did it in seven minutes, which, and they were just jogging, so I was, I was pretty impressed by that. But just the care of the school, for the children, for the different programs and I, and I emailed the principal there and I talked to Hermos Garcia about, you know, we're so focused on science and math and other classes, which rightfully so, Hank Fishkind talked about that this morning, about how we need to do more of that. You gotta have time outside and, and these kids are so overworked, it seems like, at such a low level now, not just high school, but elementary and middle school, that I thought this program was really special. And Debbie Feinsinger is the teacher over there, who's their coordinator, and she's been at Alamanda, I think, 30 years now. So, she's got kids of kids of kids who have come back and gone there and it's just a great program. And I give them kudos for going out and fundraising and getting the track laid out and set up and now they'll have programs for those kids, not only during school, but after school if they stay, and do some extra physical activities instead of just sitting in a room reading a book. So, nothing wrong with that, but I think you need to have outside time as well for these kids and I think, I think it's a great program, so kudos to the school. We know the school boards are not loaded with money these days, but them, for them to take the initiative and go out and do the track and it was a great article in the Post, so I thank them for that. And I think that is all I have.
Mayor, if I may, I'm, you brought up Discovery Village or whatever and reminded me of something, you know, unfortunately, we rely so much on Marcy for these reports and because she's a little ill, she, this is why you probably got ill. The day of the Discovery Village, I was, we were all there and this, that's why I'm bringing this up, we were wrapping presents and I wanna thank staff, all the residents of the city that donated. I mean, we have a plea, everybody goes in and they wrap gifts and I just wanted to thank everybody for doing that and then thank the people for, for donating the gifts. It's just sad that there would be so many children that wouldn't have a Christmas if it wasn't for these programs and I just wanted to thank, we forgot to bring it up again, so. Marcy, I'll let you slide this time because you weren't feeling well, but that's a big thing and I wanted to thank everybody for doing it.
I didn't wanna steal your thunder on that, okay. Thank you for bringing that up, appreciate it. Okay, if there's nothing else, let's move on to the City Manager Report. Mr. Ferris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. A few items to bring to your attention today. The first of which would be the All-Aboard Florida issue. As you know, a couple of months ago, back in November, council directed the mayor to sign the letter of some 19 questions that we had for All-Aboard Florida, seeking answers and information that would help us address what we thought our needs were in this community. On January 2, we got an answer, if you wanna call it an answer, let's just call it a non-answer from AAF All-Aboard Florida, that basically didn't address any of the questions specifically. I don't know what to do, so if there's something else you would like for me to do, let me know, but it doesn't look like we're gonna get answers to our questions.
What Dr. Fishkind said today, it seems like, I hate to use the expression, but the train's on the track. I mean, it's just sad.
I don't even understand why he brought it up in Palm Beach Gardens because it's not a benefit to us at all.
Yeah, but, but the interesting thing was he said, he says, "It's really good for the, for both ends."
Both ends. Not nothing in the middle.
And we're in the middle.
We're in the middle.
Do we invite them here and ask them face-to-face? I don't know.
I bet they probably would.
I mean, let's ask them. We have a ton of questions, we want answers. Maybe we ask them to come to a council meeting so we could ask them the questions right there and see what they say.
Erica's aboard on doing this.
You're aboard on this. Yeah. I'd rather do some type of workshop if we do something and try to get somebody here.
Ask them to work.
If you would like, I will correspond with them and invite them here and ask them to bring answers to our 19 questions.
I think that's what we want. I don't, I don't want the token letter that goes out to every city when they're asking questions and we get the PR piece. What is that?
I got, I don't know how many calls from three different people from All-Aboard in the last week, wanted to talk to me and I said, "Well, why don't you talk to our council? I mean, why are you asking to talk to me?"
Is it the, is it the marketing division of All-Aboard or is it the, the people that can make the decisions?
No, it's people that can make the decisions.
Well, let's get them over here.
Well, no, actually, I, I don't know if it is.
It's the marketing, it's not, it's not the management people.
But, you know, let's send that message.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah, Ron, send the dialogue off and see if we can have a workshop with our questions answered. Otherwise, we're gonna stop wasting our time and then...
I'll try. Okay. The next item I wanna bring to your attention is that, you know, this year we're doing some replacement of our playgrounds around the community. Here's one at Mirasol Park. This is a very unique one and so I just wanted to give you an update that it is in progress, the new play equipment for 2- to 5-year-olds, but it's also the uniqueness of the adult fitness equipment that will be going in here. The walking trail, shade structures and other, of other devices going in and everything's going along as scheduled and we hope by the end of January that the new facilities will be installed and operational for the, the visitors to the park. It's going along quite well. It's a unique concept. You should all eventually go out there and try to use some of that adult equipment. You'll enjoy it. Another project that we have going, of course, is the multipurpose field drainage improvements on all of our fields. This one here, Gardens Park, work began December the 15th and as you can see, some of the work going on here, we hope that the completion date, somewhere around January 9 or 15, that would be complete because once we get the sod restored onto the areas where they put the open trenches, we have until February 7th to grow some grass. It's on schedule, it's looking good and hopefully we'll be ready when the time comes. And as you know, that Todd Engel, our city engineer, he just loves to get his face in the newspaper, so. This was actually a very, very good article here, written by Tony Doris, explaining the process. It was very well done, so I just thought I'd bring that to your attention and give Todd a little credit. Also, just wanted to let you know, as, as many of you understand, back in 2013 of August, we had a house fire here at 280 Holly Drive. It took a lot of work and coordination by city staff to put people together between the contractor, the insurance people, the mortgage company and the attorneys getting through the building process and it seemed like it would never happen, but it has. It's done, it's finished and it's gonna serve the homeowner as well as the neighboring community well now that we sort of managed and fostered this project. And so, staff did a great job of staying on top of it. I know a couple of years doesn't sound like you're staying on top of it, but it was a long process dealing with all of those entities and staff did a great job. Next, I'd like to invite everyone out to our Arbor Day Celebration Friday, January 16th, 9:30 at Lake Catherine, as usual. I think you'll all have a nice time there. We have students from Hal Watkins, they're gonna assist us in planting a blue potato tree for this year's event. I'm gonna have to look that one up because I'm not familiar with it, so. Also, to bring to your attention, the Shakespeare Festival, Midsummer Night's Dream will be here on our Plaza, January 16 through 17. Keep in mind, this is the event that's sponsored by the Valen Isles Charities, their contribution to us for, for the arts. So, bring your lawn chairs or you'll be sitting on cold concrete and enjoy the show. Also, I'd like to inform you and the public that FDOT has a kickoff meeting scheduled here for January 29th. It's relative to the I-95 and Central Boulevard Exchange, Interchange, that's in the planning consideration process now. The meeting is held from 5:30 to 7:30 and a formal presentation will be made at 6:00. I think there's some flyers over there if you wanna pick one up on your way out so that you can all come to that meeting and see what's going on there. Last but not least, I've been asked to bring up, it has been some time since the council talked about charter review and it was stated that we would wait till the first of the year and see how things go and we'll talk about it again. I don't know where you wanna go with this, but keep in mind, the last charter review and vote was in 2012. Your charter says that you have to have at least every five years a charter review. So, if you take 2012 and add 5, I guess you can figure out when that next one limit is, unless, of course, you wanna consider the referendum vote, that just occurred in November in 2014, has a change to the charter, then you can add 5 to that. So, those are the parameters that are set forth. Now, the charter says, as often as council may deem necessary, but in any event, not less than frequently every five years, the term and provision of the charter shall be reviewed. It doesn't say by whom or how. So, those are the parameters that I came up with and whatever you wanna do as far as your discussions, as far as charter review, please let me know.
As you remember, I was the one that was really pushing for this. I really don't see the purpose at this point. You can't wear people out on charters when we had the most major issue that needed to be discussed, already voted upon and there's, now, we have term limits in place, that's retroactive and there's gonna be a new council in place by 2017, so I think that's when it should be looked at, 2017. Let them look at it and figure out what they're, they're going to do about it. You just had a vote a couple of years ago, you had this one, it's not a time, I mean, the charter is fine the way it is at this point. I mean, what are, what are your most major issues that you're gonna look at with it? You know, I just don't think you're gonna get the public participation at this point. You might get it in 2017, 2018 because there may wanna be changes to it, you know, and see what happens. That's what I think. I don't think we should be doing it at this point. That's my feeling. I wouldn't wanna vote to do it.
Well, I think if you're gonna do it, you have to start the process this year for a vote in November of '16 or you wait till November of '18 because those are the two big years for elections, whether it's the presidential or the governor election. So, I think doing it in '17 in an off-year, maybe during an election of a council, is not smart. I think it's gotta be a bigger period.
Yeah, I think you should be doing it in '17 for an election in '18, if that's what you're going to do.
Are you suggesting we do it in November?
Well, I think, I think an election has, it Well, I think, I think an election has, it has to be on election in November, whether it's sixteen or eighteen. That would be my recommendation.
You're not going to do it, you don't want to do it in March?
You could do it in March.
You could, but I think you have election of council people, and that gets kind of clouded. I think you need to have it maybe just on the ballot by itself. That's how we did it last time, correct? We did it in November of twelve last time.
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it matters.
No, I'm just giving you my opinion, I mean, you know.
I think that's for whoever going to be here that's going to make. I think if we decide we're not going to do it until seventeen, then whoever here can make the decision.
Whoever here, let them make the decision.
I'll come and stand over there and get my three minutes and say what I think.
David, what do you think?
I think we should give Joe more than three minutes. I'm a, I think our charter actually is a mess. Now, I think because we go around it and we don't follow it in a lot of ways, at least I know that we have, well...
We follow it.
Of course we follow it.
Do we...
Well, except for the checks.
Give electronic checks?
No, we don't. Those are, yeah, those are glitch things, right.
Yeah, and I think there's some contradictory things in it, you know, that we sort out just by policy up here. You know, but I think, Joe, you're probably absolutely right. I think people have charter fatigue right now.
Yeah, but do you think you're going to get people to vote intelligently in November about it? They're going to be busy with the, with the national elections.
I think we have charter fatigue. I don't think that this is...
It's hard enough to get something on the ballot as it is, I mean...
You can put it on the ballot, we can put it on the ballot, anyone, anyone up here can put it on the ballot. You don't need petitions to do it. I'm just concerned that, that if you do it in November, you're going, you're going to get such a conflict with whomever is running for president or governor or whatever, statewide, national, national elections. Not going to pay attention to it.
Maybe we should start, you know, try and shoot for March of 2017, which is three open seats.
Then it becomes a...
It becomes a...
Look all this year, yeah.
It's too soon.
Do it in the following year, you know.
See, I'm not so sure that Joe's not right, that maybe it is a little too soon. We have had three votes on charter, how many? Four, actually, right? We had two provisions, then there was the term limit and the retroactive provision, so we've had four votes in the last few years. Maybe that's enough charter fatigue, and then before that, we had Charter Review Committee, and I know we've been kicking this thing around. I do think our charter needs to be updated. We need to make it compliant with...
I'll say, most of the updating is administrative as opposed to, you know, but we went there before, and it didn't work out too good.
Because the education was very poor.
But we haven't had a charter...
Well, if you're going to do it, you have to have the right time for education and not try to jam it down somebody in five months. What do you, what do you think, Marcy?
I, I think that it's, we shouldn't be doing it this year. But I, I personally think that November is a good time to do it, because then it doesn't become a political pawn for whomever is running for office in March. Unless you do it on an off-year in March, but again...
That's the time to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we do that.
It's the only thing on the, on the agenda.
It'd be March of eighteen then, what we're paying for in elections.
And that's not really up to us.
How about if we do it in an August election?
Oh, great, no one will...
Oh, you're, primary?
Yeah, primary.
Four people voting.
There's too many of our residents that aren't here then.
Yeah, he's right. He'll never, they'll never let us on that ballot.
Let me, let's just do this. Can you, can you just pass out the information from the twelve election? Of what we did on the charter that didn't pass, so we can kind of see what the issues were at that point, and then make a decision if we...
That was the entire charter.
Yeah, I mean, all of it didn't pass, and it, it didn't pass, in my opinion, largely when you look at the votes, largely because people came out and campaigned against it for two main reasons. And the two main reasons that we heard people complaining about, other than the fact that they felt like they didn't get to participate in it, was that they, there was a, we were removing the requirement for the city manager to live in the city, and that I didn't unilaterally put in term limits. Other than that, the rest of the changes in the charter were legally necessary and legally sufficient changes. They weren't, people didn't, some people didn't understand them because they chose not to, but they weren't issues that were big political things. They were all basically just a matter of efficiency and removing conflicts. Those are the two big issues.
And you don't need a Charter Review Committee to come up with what you came up with in 2012.
No, you don't.
Obviously, because I didn't have one.
Yeah, but I'm, no, but I'm just saying, those are, those are not...
Exactly.
Those are administrative things.
Because they were, just like you're saying, they were, they were functionality.
That's why, that's why we just need time to get beyond, and then it can come back.
Okay. We'll put it on the back burner for now, but I'd like to see kind of the results from the twelve election. If I, you could pass those out on the questions and what the results are, we can do that, okay? Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Ferris? Anything for the city manager before we move on? Okay. Comments from the public? Maria Marino?
For the record, my name is Maria Marino. I live here in the Gardens, have four twenty-seven years, and I wanted to talk about the Honda Classic and the impact it has had on local agencies. Can you hear me? No?
Yeah, low closure.
I wanted to talk about the impact the Honda has had on some local agencies. I serve as the board president of the Edna W. Runner Tutorial Center, which is a small tutorial program in Jupiter, which serves one hundred and seven out-risked children. And with a grant from the Honda Classic last year, we had to hire a bus for the summer. And with that bus, we were able to feed those one hundred and seven children a hot meal, five days a week, for the entire summer, which probably would have been the only hot meal that they had for the day. So when people say, "What impact does the Honda have?", it has impact large and small, and this impact is large for a very small organization. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Maria. A lot of clapping tonight, huh? A lot of Happy New Year clapping out there. Kevin Easton?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Kevin Easton, eighty-five eleven Fortieth Terrace North. First, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Years, to everyone listening, everyone on the council. And I definitely want to thank the first responders for all that they do and for putting their lives on the line every day for us. That's most important. I also want to thank you, because I was listening in on the council meeting last, last month, and you guys did a great job with the veterans. And for all you guys do, I'm sure every veteran like myself appreciates that a lot. Next, I would like to thank you all for voting five to zero to eminent domain my properties last month when I missed the council meeting, because the water will get looped, and I think it would have got looped without your eminent domain vote. But I wasn't here to discuss that, and you chose to discuss it anyways. Perfect. What I couldn't believe, though, is that I heard the council, one of the council members saying that this was my project, okay? Well, let me assure you, if this was my project, we would have had it done years ago when it was cheaper, you know, it would have been a lot cheaper to do, it would have gotten completed. But this was a community effort to improve our neighborhood. After several years of inaction by the city and the county, and a few failed attempts by owners to get the city and county to help improve our neighborhood, I decided to get involved, and that's when things, well, they didn't really get moving very fast. But many surveys were conducted, and the results showed that the owners wanted to improve the neighborhood that our city had annexed. Okay, next, I couldn't believe all the fuss about asking, that I asked to be paid for the properties that I had for perpetuity use of my property. Now, I have fifty dollars for anyone here on the council that will give me their fourteen-hundred-and-twenty-one square foot of property to use for perpetuity, you know, for the right of use to get this done. I, I don't think anybody would take fifty dollars, and that's way more than you guys offered me, okay? The looping of the main is going to be completed. I think that's the best idea. But when we talked to Seacoast years ago, there was many different designs. One of them was to go right over to Garden Oaks, come straight down Sunset Drive, go underneath the canal, and hit the six-inch main over there on Garden Oaks. That didn't happen. I suggested a few other ways to save piping and material and everything else, labor. Those weren't accepted either, okay? But we are moving forward, and I am so happy, and I want to thank staff. I want to thank Todd Ingles especially, because he's kept this thing rolling. But I expected a lot more from the annexation, from both the city and the county, back in two thousand and two. One last thing that I would like to cover is the city attorney mentioned that the county, and this is what I say is so hard for everybody to work together, but the city attorney mentioned that in this rider that we had, the rider that we had, that they accepted the roads from, we accepted the roads from the city, I think there was a rider on it that he had mentioned that the county was trying to slip in something to have the city fix the canals. And I would just like to know if you guys knew about that first piece of paper that come across his desk, where, I guess he stopped it so that we didn't, we weren't forced to pay, I think it was two hundred and some thousand dollars for the canal, Mary Circle ditch. And if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard you say something about the first paperwork that the county had put in, you know, wanted to, they tried to slide something in. And as I say, you know, these things, they just weren't done right from the beginning, and maybe you could explain to the council or to everybody listening what they were trying to pull, or what they tried to get us to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I didn't see anything on the canals originally from the county. Was there something they were trying to get us to, to get us to pay for it?
Yes, they were trying, they were trying to get us to, as, as part of this whole thing, they were trying to get us to accept the canal's maintenance responsibility for the canals. And the cost estimates on the maintenance was something, just for the near term, was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Just to clean them out and bring them up to...
Bring them up to our standards.
Right.
And, and so we rejected that, and that delayed our ability to accept the street, the road. It took, what, a couple, that added about two, almost three months to the, about two months?
But they removed that requirement.
About two months. Yeah. All I could probably remember is the details of it a little bit better than we do, but it was two to three months.
Because I know I, I had a written letter to try to go back to the county a couple of times for additional monies. We tried to break out things, including maybe some canal costs in there, but that got denied, and then they shot us back the one, the one letter with just the one amount, and that's it.
What, what happened was when we first approved the improvements for Sunset and Fortieth Terrace, we wrote to the county, said, "Now we have a means to bring these up to our standard, so please turn the roads over to us." And they said, "We'll accept the canal and Mary Circle as well." And said, "We will accept the canal and Mary Circle as well, but you owe us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to bring those up to our standards."
Okay, all right.
And so with that letter that we wrote back to the county, they pulled that out of the deal and just gave us Fortieth Terrace and Sunset.
And what's the county's plan for the canal? When do they take care of it? Once a year? Is it even on their plan?
That's on their regular maintenance program, and we do push them along if it's not maintained properly the way it should be within the city of Palm Beach Gardens.
We do cite the county on occasion, as far as the shaping of the canals concerned and mowing of their canal banks. They always balk at us saying, "We don't have the authority to do it, but we do it anyway," so.
Otherwise, it wouldn't get cut for...
They come in, they do come in and do it eventually, once we give them code complaints.
And we've even cleaned it up before too, haven't we? Remember? Didn't we have to clean up an area because the police needed some visibility, so we even had to clean an area up too?
Because of the height, the height of the grass around the canal.
At one point. Yeah, so we try our best.
They're just not going to budge. The county doesn't have any interest, so we're happy to get whatever we could out of them, so.
And that's what the problem is, is that we just don't, the, the people in our neighborhood just don't seem to get enough help from the county or from the city. The canal is a mess right now, okay, and yet it doesn't get taken care of. Forward thinking, there was no forward thinking back in two thousand and two when the county and the city got together to, to do this. And, you know, I don't know if it was because Garden Oaks wanted to be annexed into the city and we got absorbed.
We can't say that, but I think we're...
I can't say that, right. I can't say that for sure.
We're making progress, so it's...
We are making, we definitely are making progress, but I certainly hope that you can keep after the county, because the canal is a mess right now.
We're going to keep after the county and tell them to come out and cut it if they don't do it, so.
And I just wanted to be, yeah, I wanted everybody to be aware that the county is very sneaky, okay? They tried to put that rider in there. They've been doing this all along to us, okay, and we pay taxes to the county as well as to you guys. So I'm just looking for help in our just desserts for the neighbors.
Thank you, Kevin. Marcy?
I just want to say a couple of things, and I know, Ron, you might want to pipe in there too, but first of all, I wanted to just point out that every single house in a planned development in Palm Beach Gardens has an easement, or two, or three, on their property. It's required in Palm Beach County, not Palm Beach Gardens. I live, everybody in this, on this council has an easement. I have two on my property. I didn't pay, I didn't get paid fifty bucks, a hundred bucks, I didn't get paid, I paid for that easement. And that easement is for utilities. Adjacent to every roadway in Palm Beach County, you are required to provide a ten-foot or more utility easement. And you guys can tell me, Todd, if I'm, I'm wrong, but I can guarantee you, every single planned development that I've done, designed in the past, is required. It's required to have, excuse me, an easement. And I have a drainage easement, utility easement, as do most properties. That is required in the planning process, in the front and in the back. Many properties on the side have drainage easements. Those are required. They're not, it's not something that, that the property owner has been given money for, and in addition, we are not taking the property. We just asked for an easement to put in the required utilities. That is it. Every other property owner in your neighborhood gave the required easement for the utilities, the water that you so much asked for, that you so much wanted, and you came to us numerous times, asking us, "Please help us get water in your neighborhood." You did, Kevin, and then you brought a lot of neighbors. And personally, I think if we're going to pay you for that easement, we need to pay everybody the same dollar amount per square footage, and that cost gets divided amongst everybody. Excuse me. I think it's, that's the only, that's only fair. I don't think that we could pay one and not pay every other property owner, but every other property owner in the neighborhood, they gave the required easement for the utilities, for the water, for the, and for the roadway. Every roadway, your, your roads are different than most in our city. Your roadways have easements, most have right-of-ways, so that's another reason that an easement is required. And personally, I'm appalled that one person out of the entire neighborhood is asking for a monetary, a monetary reimbursement for an easement. We're not taking the property, we're just asking for an easement. You still own the property. It's a whole different thing, and every other person has that. So I'm just, I just wanted to point that out. Sorry.
All right, let's continue to work through the process. Next up is Lynn Clausman, I'm sorry. Name an address for the record, please, Lynn. Thank you.
To address you, but I am so appalled by the attitude of all our elected officials, not here, but especially the Palm Beach County Commission, about All Aboard Florida. Every single town that runs along the railway has been having meetings, has been objecting to it. Meanwhile, they're closing Ventura Street, they're closing this, they're building that. Everybody knows that there is no profit in commuter rails. What the profit is going to be is the transportation of stuff. And we're going to have tons of railroad cars. Somebody has to get to Burns Hospital, and they're stopped at alternate A-1A until all these railroad cars go by. Somebody could die. Jupiter is up in arms, Laxahatchee is up in arms. Meanwhile, we sit here and we wait for All Aboard Florida to contact us. The North County Neighborhood Coalition, headed by South Fassow, who happens to live in Ibis, not part of Palm Beach Gardens, has been really trying to get some opposition to this started. But everybody seems to be very apathetic, especially our county commission. And it's annoying and upsetting that we say, "Well, let's ask them again to come and talk to us." Why don't we get Jupiter? Why don't we get all the towns along the way and have a big meeting of their city councils so we could show some force and people to object to this abomination that's going to go on? This is in addition to the garbage. I don't know, did the county commission again vote on the garbage? I know they were taking another vote on it.
I didn't see that today. I think they passed it.
They passed it again?
Yeah, they're seeking, yeah.
Again? All the body parts, and all the pollution, and all the odors, and all the echo stuff that we're trying to do for... that we're trying to do for our community, right down the drain. Who's getting paid off for this? Who gives a damn about body parts from Georgia and trash from other counties? Why are we accepting this? Because 10% isn't being utilized? It will be utilized once more people moved here, move here. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to take up your time.
It's fine, Lynn. We appreciate the, we love your passion. We, we, trust me, we understand. And there has been meetings in Jupiter where they've had 400 people show up at their auditorium to question mayors, very active, trying to fight it because of their bridge situation, Congressman Murphy. I mean, the railroad is an entity unto itself that it's not something that you could put up a block.
It's a private, it's a, it's not a, a federal thing. It's a private organization.
Technically, it's federal.
That's doing it for private profit.
They've been here for 100 years, Lynn.
Well, why can't we do something?
We are trying. There are a lot of municipalities up and down the corridor that are trying, but it's not something that can easily be done. So if, if something can't be stopped, we're trying to make things safer, more efficient.
I understand that.
There's a lot of things that we're, that are going on. Trust me.
If we all coalesce, perhaps.
We already have, we are.
Strength in numbers.
Lynn, we already doing that. We've been doing that for months and bringing in the congressman and other people to try to, and the coast guard to talk about the bridges and other things. It's been going on for months, Lynn, and we wish there was a, a way that they could say, no, we're going to stop and sit back and rethink all this, but that's not in their plans, so if it does come through, we need to be?
And who is there?
The company, all aboard Florida.
The company. And where does the company get their approval from? Our county commission?
No, they don't have, they?
They own the right of way for the tracks and they can put that in. It was there years ago, it came back up and now they're putting it back down again.
Well, now they're expanding.
But they already own that right of way for that property, so that's, that's their property.
Well, it seems to me, and I know nothing, I'm just a common housewife.
I understand.
And golfer.
And we love that you're here tonight yelling and, and talking. We appreciate that.
And I've come a lot because I love to listen to you guys.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Let, let Marcy talk a little bit, if you don't mind, sit down and we'll let Marcy.
First, I implore your passion and agree with what you're saying, we all do. We've been working on this for actually a couple of years now. The Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council is an organization where it's a, a regional organization where a lot of the county commissioners and municipality council members are members. And they have written numerous responses and letters to all aboard Florida asking for a, a, a whole slew of items and response, as have we. However, the right of way, we as cities and the county, because the right of way was there before we have been there, before we were a city, we actually have to ask them for permission to cross their right of way for road purposes. So when Donald Ross Road and PGA, well, that's a flyover, but other roads, Hood Road, we have to ask them for a crossing permission to cross because they were there first, we were here second. And their right of way is wide enough to double track without our permission. But they own it, they can do whatever they want, just like, you know.
Lynn, there's only one, there's only one organization, one group that has any say in this, and that's the marine industry and the coast guard. That is it, okay? As far as us and our houses and the impact we're going to have, nobody cares.
Unfortunately.
But the boats, okay, and, and the bridge crossings, that's where, if this thing does not happen, which I think is probably less than 10% chance, it's going to be because of the marine industry and the bridges and so forth and the safety there. That's really the whole issue. We are all as frustrated. You see, you see inactivity only, and, and it's something that's frustrating to you. Well, it's frustrating to us that whatever we do, we get nowhere, okay? And it's a big problem. We call them, the biggest person that has impact is Congressman Murphy. And he's been trying and we're not getting anywhere. So, you know, we?
Why, why isn't he getting anywhere?
Because, no, the federal railroad, trust me, the Federal Railroad Administration is, is?
Never met a railroad they don't like, so.
I'll tell you that.
In addition, your garbage question, it was on the county commission agenda. They did speak about it, but I believe they tabled it because of the new council members, the new commissioners.
That's right. They did table it because of the new commissioner.
So it'll be back up on their?
We fought that though. I, I actually spoke at a Legisys meeting against bringing garbage in from out, out of the county and everything, because, you know, it's going to wa, save you a whopping $3 a year.
Yeah.
It's not worth it. And the amount of trash that we're going, it's going to cost more to pick up the trash that these, have you ever seen a garbage truck that didn't leak?
Of course.
I haven't seen one that doesn't leak. They all leak. And they're all pulling trash out and the amount to clean up that trash is going to be more. But you also asked a legitimate question that I have the answer for. Flagler started bringing the FEC railroad down in 1880. It was completed to Key West in 1909.
So that was long before.
So it was long before.
We were a dream.
You need to come back next month and we're going to have like a Lynn update section. You come up every three months and ask us questions and we'll keep filling you in.
Well, I really would like to confront Hal Valash.
Well, then you should order the county permission.
Give them a call.
355-2201. Give them a call.
I sent him emails, he doesn't answer.
Call his office. No, I'm serious. He'll talk, I'm just telling you, he'll call, he'll talk to you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Thanks for your concern. We all are.
Okay, I'm going to butcher this one. Is it, is it Talitha? I'm sorry.
Talitha?
Talitha, thank you. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name's, or good afternoon, my name's Sleetha Hazelton, 1477 Northwest 40th Lane in Boca Raton. I come to you all today as a resident who has the same plea as almost Miss Lynn here, this palpable frustration with this threatening inefficiency, this threatening churning waste, dilapidation, but not in the form of a train, in the form of another housing development here in Palm Beach Gardens, at the cost of the destruction of one of the few precious and wild forests we have, which is the Brigger Forest. Unlike Lynn, however, we have the recourse of you all, each of you all, and I'm speaking about Proposition 5. Resolution 5, Alton Neighborhood 1 Platte. We have the ability to appeal to you all and you all have the ability to save this forest. We don't have to talk to a deaf federal government. We don't have to speak to a deaf federal railroad. We are not appealing to private interest. It is true that private interest, just like all aboard Florida, is what's motivating this development. Pure greed. But we can appeal to you. We do not have to have our pleas fall on deaf ears. We are the voice for the voiceless. We agree with Mayor Promozio, as he stated earlier in this meeting, that yes, the kids do need to be outside. When your child wants to see one of the almost endangered species of a gopher tortoise, where are you going to take that child to see that tortoise? And the, in the forest, the Brigger Forest, right now that exists where you can share that beauty, that wonderment with your child? That will not exist if this commission approves Resolution 5. You will have to tell your child, their grandchildren, their grandchildren and their grandchildren after that, that there used to be a thing called the gopher tortoise, but it's now extinct because of private interests, because we sat and did nothing. Not only is there gopher tortoise, there's also pine forest. If you wanted to take your child or your children's children to a Panera, to a Starbucks, to a mall, you have plenty of options here in Palm Beach Gardens. If you want to take your child to real nature, a pine forest, you have one stop and that stop is about to disappear. We are going to see its destruction. You will be passing a resolution that ensures its destruction and we will have another Starbucks, another mall, another air-conditioned space at the cost of the wild. I want to point, if I may have Mayor, about 30 more seconds.
Sure, go ahead.
I want to point you all to this public kickoff meeting that I believe was passed out by FDOT. You'll see in there, the Brigger Forest is the only green small miniature square that you can see. In a scene of development, it is the only green. That green square, that last remaining tidbit, is about to be obliterated. And I would like to point this commission to Code of Ordinances of Palm Beach Garden Division 5, which wisely sets forth that the purpose and intent of the division is to preserve and protect the ecological values and functions of this city's natural resources and environmentally significant lands from alterations that would result in the loss or significant degradation of these habitats, thereby increasing the amount and quality of open space and to ensure the protection and conservation of these natural resources and environmentally significant lands in perpetuity. When you look at this beautiful city, you see development, but what, what complements development, what makes this city worth living in, is the beautiful nature that also is within it. Please do Palm Beach County a service and do not pass Resolution 5, the Platte allotment for Alton Neighborhood 1, to allow them to continue this profit motivated development at the cost of your children and your children's children. And at the risk of being legalistic, but because we are stopping at no cost, I will point out a seemingly asinine point, but that the, under this Sheet 1 of 13 of Appendix A to Resolution 5, there is a significant, there is a portion entitled City of Palm Beach Gardens acknowledgements. And that incorrectly lists a one David Levy as the mayor, and that's in black print. There's also several different incorrect prints of 2014 as the year of the signature date on Sheet 1 of 13. And Florida Statute 177.091 mandates that the platte for recording must be printed in black permanent ink and cannot be modified, but must be printed in a specific type of ink. As it sets you now, please, for the wild, for the voiceless, do not support Resolution 5 and deny it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Seagrave?
Yeah. Hello?
Yeah.
My name is Mary Seagrave and I'm from Palm Beach Gardens. I'm also here to speak about the Brigger Forest and why we should not be destroying it. Just a few facts, I don't know if you know, but the increased CO2 levels of 4 million square foot biotech city, animal testing labs, biohazardous waste, destruction of threatened and endangered native animal habitat, more wasted tax dollars, 500,000 square feet of strip malls, urban sprawl, and 2,700 unnecessary residential units, more corruption. Three of the seven county commissioners who voted in favor of Scripps Biotech have gone to federal prison for development related corruption charges. And now I just wanted to read a poem called "The Dying Forest." Crunch, crunch, go my feet. I run through the forest, fast as the wind. Woosh is the sound I hear as another tree begins its descent. I look back just in time to see the mighty tree go crash upon the ground. I run faster, for all I hear is the low rumble of the destructive machines. All around, trees cry out and overhead, the sky begins to darken. Plop, plop goes the rain as it begins to fall. I feel the sky's tears on my face as I evacuate the dying forest. I hear the squish of my feet on the soggy ground as I walk alone. Atop the hill, I sit watching the trees come down. Lightning flashes out in anger, followed by a reverberating boom. As I hear another tree go smash, I begin to weep for this dying forest. Please stop the development of Scripps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I see all the cards right now. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we pulled from the consent agenda?
Pull item B, Resolution 1. Before we go on to that, I think, I think that we need to respond to some of these statements, their so-called statements. First off, this city has the most environmentally protected land of any city in, probably in the state of Florida. Over 40% of our city is in conservation status. Second off, we have the Frenchman's Forest, which is the same habitat, which is just down the road. In addition, this is a piece of property surrounded by development with a major highway running through it, is highly disturbed, it has a great deal of invasive species. The water table has been depressed because it's in the Seacoast Utility Well Field District. We are preserving 25% of this particular piece of property under our ordinance. We are one of the few cities in Florida that has a non-taking on gopher tortoises. There will not be a gopher tortoise that, that is killed in this. It will either be put into the preserve portion of the property or they will be relocated. You also have Jonathan Dickinson State Park, which also has very similar habitat to this. I take very, very great offense that this city, which is one of the best environmental records of any city in the state of Florida, is under attack because of a project that has had zoning available for it that required it to be, that could have made it to knock down. We don't have the right as a city council to take people's property rights away. This property has always been zoned for development, it has never been slated for preservation. Now, if you want good preservation land, go out to the Loxahatchee Slough. That's something that this city council, I'm proudly to say, rezone to conservation. That is where preservation belongs, not in a property that's run right through the middle by I-95. Thank you, David. Alright, let's move on. Consent agenda, we have, we're pulling item B, Resolution 1, 2015 for Councilman Russo. Anything else being pulled? Conflicts? No? Okay.
Move approval of the consent agenda without item B.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Will the clerk read Resolution 1, 2015?
Resolution 1, 2015, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, awarding a public safety grant for off-duty police and fire personnel to the Children's Healthcare Charity Incorporated for the 2015 Honda Classic PGA Golf Tournament and to approve a lease agreement for the use of specific portions of Mira Sol and PGA National Parks for various parking facilities and general purpose operations, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor, as I have in the past, I sit on the board of the Children's Healthcare Charity and I also serve as a treasurer of said organization. I am not compensated, I receive no financial benefit, although I do not feel comfortable with voting on this particular issue. And I've spoken to the city attorney and he's advised me, if I don't feel comfortable voting on it, then I should abstain, so therefore I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. All in motion?
Mr. Chairman, move Resolution 1, 2015.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0. Uh, 4-0, is that correct? You were not voting, correct? Okay. Passes 4-0. Thank you. Want to get my numbers correct?
That's a way to vote.
Uh, next up is Ordinance 14, 2014. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 14, 2014, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, mending the City of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2013 and ending September 30, 2014, inclusive providing conflicts clauses, severability clause and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Hello, Mr. Owens?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is second reading, there have been no changes since first reading. I do have a presentation if you desire to see it again. Basically, this is just a couple of cleanup amendments for last fiscal year. Again, no impact on our financial fund balance position in the general fund, so it's your pleasure if you have any questions or you want to see a presentation again, let me know.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Owens? No? Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back up for discussion or a vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Ordinance 14, 2014 on second reading and adoption.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you, sir. Uh, next up on the agenda, resolutions. Do we have any tonight? Seeing none. Items for council discussion or action? Any discussions tonight? City Attorney report?
No.
No, sir? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.